Okay. Meeting is called to order. Mr. Tom McCarthy will lead the pledge of allegiance.
We choose to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. We'll need a roll call to determine if we've got a forum.
Bronn Fruth.
Here.
Karen Tepley.
Here.
Tom McCarthy.
Here.
Mark Chambers.
Here.
Kevin Melby.
Here.
Melanie Walters.
Here.
Steve Downs.
Here.
Brian Cairns.
Here.
Thank you. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Ashley, did you have something on that?
Yes, on the meeting minutes from the last meeting, under number five, hiring and retention bonuses, there is an error in that the motion should, it should read the very last sentence, motion period, it should state six one, not seven zero. So you can make that correction.
Thank you. Once the councils have a moment to review the minutes, motion to approve the minutes with the amendment that Ashley just mentioned.
I don't think I seconded that.
Same?
I don't think I seconded that. I was the main focus.
I think that's where the, you're correct. That's where the confusion happened because the one was you.
Right.
Yes. So we'll verify and correct.
Can you entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Walters. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Old Person Tepley. Any discussion of the minutes? Okay. Hearing one, all in favor of approving the minutes with the one amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next is approval of the agenda. Again, once the councils have a moment to review, entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make.
I'll make the motion.
Motion for Mr. Chambers.
I'll second.
Second for Ms. Tepley. Any discussion of tonight's agenda? Hearing one, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Agenda is approved. Next up, City and Utility Department had reports and concerns. Who's got the microphone? Jason, you're holding it. Would you like to begin?
Yes. So, um, from the economic development side of things, we continue to work on panorama agreement. We are doing some additional work in the industrial part to complete some planning that we had previously started, working with Beer Bicker Engineering to assist us in determining a proper development structure for the Horn Street. This would involve kind of the long conversation we've been having with regard to redevelopment authority, community development authority. So we're looking from Beer Bickers to give us counsel on how to navigate through that to determine what would be the most appropriate for the city. Continue to work on tax incremental financing districts, especially in the downtown area. We just got notification that the grant package has been finalized for the congressional directed spending that we were awarded. That pertained to the hospital project. So we've got a lot of work going through that grant package, deciphering what's there, figuring out our next steps there. And we have also been spending some time, significant time actually, working on subdivision planning, which I think the mayor will comment on as the chair of the planning commission coming up here. As far as the public works director, it's brand new. We're about a month in. A lot of good things, very positive things, I think are happening, gathering a lot of ideas, developing relationships within the different departments, working very closely with Spencer and Tess in buildings and grounds with Jody and Parks and Rec. She's been an incremental part of a lot of the conversations because she's got perhaps some of the best knowledge of things that have been going on with Parks and Rec and buildings and grounds because of her tenure here with us, working with Jason Coe and the guys in the streets department, just talking about things that we can do differently. One of the questions that I'd like to ask them, all of them, is what pain point do you have and how can I help to remove that pain point? So there's a lot of planning that I expect that we'll be doing this winter. There are probably pain points that the council members have experienced, especially in the past year with all of the rain that we've had and some of the difficulty in managing the large number of acres that we have and the mowing. And so those are some of the things that we'll be really looking at and trying to plan and strategically get better at for the year upcoming. So those are brief reports.
May I ask, Jason, and perhaps Mr. Gold, and go be next, sir? Eighth Street. I'm told they believe they'll be paving the second week of this month, is what I was told. I don't know if you've heard of it yet.
Yeah, Scott, do you remember their exact pave date? They didn't really give us one today at that nine o'clock meeting, so. Yeah. Coming up, they gotta finish the landscaping and have all that done with their mini excavators before they put the blacktop down to tear up the new blacktop. So we've gotta finish alongside the new curb before the blacktop are coming. And yeah, we figured out concrete, so there'll be additional concrete work happening this week. You know, one of the main topics has been how do we kind of control traffic in that area? So the public should be hearing announcements through tourism that we're recommending that the traffic pattern for the fair would be to use Highway 80 North and then Industrial Drive to cut over to Double A and then back to the fair ground. So we may be actually, we've talked about in our job site meetings that we're adding signage. We may even add more signage because it's gravel road there right now. And if we get the normal fair traffic up Eighth Street and cutting over on Park, we're gonna have a lot more complications due to it being gravel than we'd care to deal with. So we're trying to reroute traffic north on 80 to Industrial Drive, take a right on Industrial Drive, another right on Double A back to the fair ground is the preferred traffic pattern. We've been working with the police and the streets department to make sure that we've kind of got that marked and outlined. So other than that, the blacktop will follow here shortly, but right now they're working on driveway abrins and finishing up other concrete elements. Then they'll move into a situation where they're dressing the landscaping. All of the landscaping between the sidewalk and the curb will be redone and that's so that you don't have heavy equipment, bobcats, dump trucks, things like that, operating on new blacktop to fix your medians, right? So or your right of weights or your boulevard. So that's kind of the process and it sounds like as soon as they've got that work complete, the blacktopper should be accessible.
Thank you, Jason. Sir Scott Gold.
Good evening. Kind of like Jason, about a month in, three weeks in, things are going really good, really busy. Had two openings to fill. We had 11 applicants for the vacancy in the water department. We added Colt Johnson, 10 years of experience, moved here from Hastings, Minnesota. Fiance works here in town, so excited about that. And then for the vacancy of our office manager, which we renamed to accounting coordinator. We found a get out, starts next Monday, a lot of banking, accounting background, excited about that. So that's good stuff. To Eighth Street, utilities are done. We'll be racking out some of the poles and overhead wires that the street lighting up through there. Been working really good with Jason and Ashley. We've been meeting every Monday morning, eight thirty. Looking at what you guys have for unit code as far as the agendas. We're gonna work on getting that out there. Our staff in the office is going to help with that. And overall, I think the transition in the first three weeks has been very positive from everybody involved. So that's what I got. I don't know what other kind of updates you guys want me to bring or how lengthy, but if there's anything, please reach out to me and I can definitely share. But from a high level, that's what we've been doing. I got about three days with Vanessa before she left, so that whole week was transferred everything over to my manager. So that's about what's been going on in the first three weeks.
While he's got the microphone, does anyone on the council have any questions for Mr. Gold? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Stacy.
Good evening. Good evening. Just a brief update from the library. Brief PS access point is officially discontinued as of last Friday. We do have a drop box in front of the building now, but we can no longer accept packages inside the library. September is library card signup month, a great time to get a new library card or renew your existing library card. We, during this afternoon, will have a vacant seat on our library board for a community rep upcoming this month due to one of our board members moving. And November 2024 marks the 55th anniversary of our library building. We'll have an open house event and chili lunch on Saturday, November 2nd.
Thank you, Attorney Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, we have been dealing with our enforcement procedures. As you know, I've been reviewing the code ordinances. There are some places where it's conflicted, which is stymied efforts to enforce nuisance property, uninhabitable home ordinances. I've been working with Tracy, the building inspector in Chief Jones, on a number of nuisance properties. We're using those as kind of a model cases. And then I hope to develop those into procedures that I can hand off and kind of ensure that we don't need to start from scratch again in the future should there be any significant changes. But it was a little bit of slow going there, but I think we're on the same page now and we'll be able to respond more quickly in the future.
Thank you. Ashley.
So I would echo what Scott said about since him coming into the role of utility manager, we have been meeting on a regular basis and it has been going very, very well. So I'm happy to be able to build a collaborative relationship with him. The clerk treasurer's office, we're looking at conducting a records purge in the near future. We've got a lot of very, very, very old records that we're trying to get organized, make space. And so there will be information forthcoming about when that'll be because it will affect operations. We're carrying on. We just finished an election last month. We're preparing for another one. So we'll be doing a lot of election prep. We'll have some information coming out for the public, for you all as well, on information about the election. If there's changes to anything you might be accustomed to, we'll have that information, some educational things as well. And lastly, on the city's webpage, under the government tab at the top, there is an option, a tab, if you will, that says opportunities to serve. So if anyone is interested in volunteering in any capacity for the city, they could fill out an online application there. But also with, as Stacy mentioned, that vacancy on the library board, if somebody wanted to submit online, they're interested in that position, they could use that feature as well.
Thank you. Okay, I think I got everybody. Next on the agenda, mayor and all the persons committee, commission, board reports and comments and or items to be discussed at a future meeting. Mr. Bronn Fruth.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Tepley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Just gonna add on to a few things from the library board. Story walk has a new and I would say a timely story, Night at the Fair by Donald Cruz, I believe is how you pronounce his last name. So when you're at the fair, stop through the story, Story Walk and check out that new story. We also have a new monthly newsletter. You can also sign up for that newsletter through a link on the website and there are printed copies at the library. So it kind of does some introductions of staff and what's happening at the library. And then just one last thing, we've been working on RF ID process, which allows, it's tagging the books, which allows patrons to be able to check out the book on their own. So you don't actually need to go to the counter if you choose not to. So they have 19, over 19,000 items have been tagged and that's approximately half of what we have for the library. Then also Historic Preservation Commission met last week and I want us to be meeting quarterly, so that's always good news. Or we have a few more things done. So update on the Vernon Townsend historical marker. I received an email from the state on July 2nd. They stated that they have received our information and they'll look forward to going through their process of what they do. We also talked about the plans for unveiling this sign. So just working up a guest list of prominent people in the area. Another topic that was on our agenda was conversation between the history room at the Bureau of Library and how the Historic Preservation Commission can assist with either other facts. Stacy had brought up four, three other points. So we're just gonna take a look at seeing how we can assist. It does state in the ordinance that it does play a role. Some other things that, I want to thank Amanda for putting all of the minutes from 1987 to present on our website, so we have easy access to that. One of the items that will be for future agenda items, other Historic Preservation Commissions in other communities around our community, they also, you know, take on things like public art and that type of thing. So those would be things that we'll talk about in the future. And then lastly, just once again, just for public knowledge, we are going to be having, in addition to our wayfinding signs, which I'm sure you have seen throughout the city, we are also going to have trailhead signs to point out access points to the bike trail. We get many visitors not knowing where they can go, how they can get on, where they can park. And so there will be eight of them that will signify access points as well as parking. So you will be seeing those shortly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Tom McCarthy.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ron Chambers.
Parks and Rec met last week. Couple of things that are happening there. One of the items that the Parks Department has been taking a look at was to help some community members, the lights at Crosscut Park, trying to figure out new lighting, LED, and then also the logistics of do those lights need to be as high as they are? Getting up there to change those can be a little bit difficult. The city doesn't have a boom that would reach that high. So we're taking a look at how that might look to redo the lights at Crosscut Park. Also a couple of things with the Aquatic Center, Splash Pad. Keith Baling's sitting right out there. He's been kind of helping spearhead that, looking at putting a shelter out near the Splash Pad. Keith had been doing a lot of groundwork on that without a shovel, I guess. No digging yet, but just trying to find a bid for some of the concrete work and whatnot. I believe the shelter is a go for donation already. Is that right, Keith?
Yes.
Yeah, so the shelter's already been donated. Just trying to find somebody that's able to do the concrete work to put that shed on. And I don't know if we have anybody nailed down for that quite yet, Keith? Still looking. So if you're interested in that, reach out to Keith Baling or stop into the Parks Department. And then finally, there was one more thing. Oh, Rotary Lights, signed on with the Rotary Lights for one more year. They said, you know, it's going all right. There's some folks showing up for that thing every once in a while. So no, Keith came to ask if they could get another renewal for this year for Rotary Lights and the Parks Department unanimously said absolutely, let's do it again. So thank you. Thanks, Keith, for all your hard work.
Keith, I'm gonna pause right here. Do you have anything you want to say about the donation of the shelter at the Splash Pad or Rotary Lights?
Well, just looking for the methodology of getting the work done. And been working with Jason a little bit, some of the work may end up being done by city employees in different departments. And it just kind of makes sense really on a cost basis and that kind of thing. So we put in there that we want it done by a particular date in May, in the spring, so that it's ready to go next year and ahead of, before school is out. So that can turn on the water where it's all set to go.
Do we want to publicly acknowledge who's donating here?
The Rotary Club of Richland County and its Rotary Foundation are doing the funding for the project. And Home Centers and Ripless, up on Highway 80. Same with some neighbors, like where they live, out northeast of town. Actually, if you want to see the particular type of structure, he's got the structure there at site up on Highway 80. You can go on by there, like that'd be what the thing would look like.
Thank you, Keith. Okay, next up here, I'll let Mr. Perry get the camera turned back around. Melanie Walters.
All right. Nothing new to report from Simons because we did not have a meeting in August because it fell during the times that they normally shut the pool down for maintenance. So, but exciting news from the personnel committee. We have filled some vacancies. We have extended an offer and it was accepted for the zoning administrator. The gentleman's name is Matt Williams and he will be starting on the ninth of this month. He will be working with, is it Mark Wright from Beer Bickers? So Mark will stand board for a while to offer training and support for Matt. The next position that we did interviews, we extended an offer and it was accepted, is Ms. Amanda Keller is going to be our city clerk. For those of you who don't know, Amanda is currently our admin assistant in that office. So we will be doing her official appointment at our next personnel committee meeting this month. That does mean now that the admin assistant position in that office is vacant. That job will be posted by online, but on the leak. We have been conducting interviews for the treasurer position and hopefully we'll have more news about that at our next meeting. And then the personnel committee also approved a LTE position, an admin support position that will provide support to the Economic Development and Public Works Department. That job is currently posted online. So if you or anyone you know is interested in those positions, please take a look at the job descriptions and fill out an application. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin Melby.
Actually, after making its way through public safety and then public works, our pedestrian crossing sign at Eighth Main Street is now installed and working properly, not interacting with the one at Sixth Main, so it's not detailed, but it is working and in there. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Steve Downs.
Uh, nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Ryan Cairns.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, a couple of things. From the planning commission, in addition, there are some agenda items later tonight. But in addition to those, Mr. Glassbrunner briefly mentioned, I believe that, the Lamont subdivision as it's being named. Mr. Mike Lamont and Ms. Ellen Evans, you may know or have known, they're family members. Mike, his brother-in-law is Jim Harris, was a football coach here for many, many years. And Ellen's mother was Phyllis Keller, who had Burnham Jewelers downtown. Her dad was Bun Keller, my mailman, Rod's mailman, everybody's mailman back in the day. And Mike bought 12 acres from Rosalie Wheat, kind of up above Rainbow Drive, and their intent is to build houses up there. And they've been working with the city on this and they've done everything we've asked them. They've been amazing. Engaged with an engineering firm. They've had it surveyed. They've literally followed the playbook step by step. They're professionals. And they came to give the overview of what they want to do to the planning commission. And I know that meeting was videoed and is on YouTube and Facebook as well. If you'd like to see what they had to say, they spoke for several minutes. Again, they've been fantastic. We'll have more details as they're available on that. Ambulance committee met last week. If you haven't seen it yet, there's been some grumbling coming out of that, some disagreement coming out of that. It's part of a process. It'll be okay. But it was an interesting meeting. I'll stop there. Okay, and then an update, a happy one, on the Aquatic Center. I met a young woman on Saturday at my day job and she is a young mom from Baraboo. And she let me know that we have the best aquatic center anywhere in southwest Wisconsin and that she and her poor mom group from Baraboo make regular trips here because of it. And said that she's very disappointed to learn that the city of Baraboo is considering not having a pool and is grateful that we built what we did and they come consistently to use it. And Jody's not here, but I know they track where people are coming from. I would love to invite Jody down here to share some of that with the public, of where people are coming to our city from, because I walk through there a lot in the summertime and ask people where they're from. Half of those people are not local. And I asked them if they would be in Richland Center if we had not built that and almost 100% of them will know. That's why we came here. So I just wanted to share that. It made me very happy. Okay, next on the agenda is the treasurer's report.
In your packet, which is on the website available for anyone to view, you have both the city monthly treasurer's report as well as the utility treasurer's report, both available on there. So if you'd like to review that and I'll take any questions that you may have.
I'll just do it right now. Okay. Once the council has reviewed the treasurer's reports, I'll entertain any questions you might have. And if there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. I'll make the motion to approve the treasurer's report. Motion for Mr. Melby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Downs. Questions or comments regarding the treasurer's report?
Ashley, quick question if you do notice the, in the city treasurer's report, room tax increase of 21,000?
So room tax is updated on a quarterly basis?
Okay.
So that would be the quarter.
The big jump guy. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion of the treasurer's report? Okay, hearing one, we'll need a roll call to approve.
Fruth.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Sorry. Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion taxes?
Okay, one item I meant to mention just a minute ago that I left out. What's the meeting called tomorrow, Michael?
It's a public information session.
Public information session. This is the, the county had commissioned a group to take a look at the campus buildings, I believe the courthouse, jail and the Health and Human Services building?
Yes, in addition to the campus.
And the campus, yeah? So tomorrow evening, just to remind everyone, tomorrow evening at the White House at 6:00 PM, Venture Architects will be basically revealing their findings and telling the public, I guess giving their initial advice to the county of what they found and what they would recommend based on the condition of the campus buildings, the courthouse, jail and Health and Human Services. Is that accurate?
My understanding is it's just a presentation of the findings. It'll ultimately be up to the county board to determine what, if anything, to act on.
For sure. Okay, so again, 6:00 PM tomorrow evening at the White House, Venture Architects doing the presentation. Okay. Next on the agenda is payment of the bills that the council reviews. I need you to read the following. The bills presented on this day excluding any library fund invoices having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee and said committee having duly investigated and audited these bills hereby make the following recommendation, that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exemptions that are listed. It is signed by all three members of the Finance Committee. that are listed. It is signed by all three members of the Finance Committee. Once the council's had a moment to review the bills, entertain a motion to pay them.
Like, motion to pay the bills?
Motion from Ms. Tepley, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCarthy, any discussion of the bills? Hearing no, we'll need a roll call to pay them.
Prue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next on the agenda, public safety recommendations in action, Mr. Kevin Melby.
Public safety met at five thirty tonight. Couple things on the agenda, the first would be number five, a temporary class B picnic license for the Greater Richland Area Chamber for Hispanic Heritage Day on September fourteenth from ten A M to six P M at the Crossco Park Center area. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the temporary class B picnic license for the Greater Richland Area Chamber for Hispanic Heritage Day, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, from ten A M to six P M. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs, any discussion? Hearing no, in favor of approving the temporary class B picnic license for the Greater Richland Area Chamber for Hispanic Heritage Day on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, ten A M to six P M, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Right, number six would be the temporary class B beer and class B license, wine license for the Greater Richland Area Chamber of Commerce for the beer and wine walk on October fourth, twenty twenty-four. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the temporary class B beer and class B wine license for the Greater Richland Area Chamber of Commerce for a beer and wine walk, October fourth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Chambers, any discussion? Hearing no, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carried.
All right, number seven, temporary class B beer and class B wine license for the Richland County Performing Arts Council for concert, uh, October eleventh, twenty twenty-four. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the temporary class B beer and class B wine license for Richland County Performing Arts Council, October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, from six P M to eleven P M. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Prue, any discussion?
Kevin, can you explain a little bit about what that is? Uh, they're having a concert at the Auditorium, the name of the band escapes me.
Okay.
Jimmy Blues. A Jimmy Blues band?
Yeah.
Okay, who should they contact for tickets? You.
No.
I, I thought it was a trick question.
Okay.
I'm gonna guess tickets are available for the Performing Arts Council.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, hearing no, in favor of approving the temporary class B beer and wine license for Richland County Performing Arts Council for October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Next up, Finance Committee recommendations in action, Mr. Ryan Cairns.
Item eight, renewal of legal services agreement. Uh, Finance Committee met directly before council. You can see in your packet, the outline. Um, I had requested, um, at a prior meeting to see our year-over-year expenditures, uh, attorneys, and, uh, miss, this whole font and, uh, put that all together in the packet. There is one error, um, the fee is not supposed to be a hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour, it's a hundred and fifty. So my motion would be to authorize a one-year renewal of the legal services agreement with abswain law in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
There's a motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second from Ms. Tepley, is there discussion? Okay, hearing no, we'll need a roll call for that.
Cairns.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, Planning Commission recommendations in action, or nine, consider the application of Marion and Carley revocable trust to divide a parcel of land located at two eighty-six West Sixth Street, tax I D two seven six dash one six four five dash seven zero zero zero. The Carley family has worked with City Zoning over the last several months actually to get this to us. Very pleased to see it here. What their intent is, is to divide off the dario and make it its own parcel, which right now it's combined with, uh, the housing that it's attached to. And what they want to do is divide that off, leave the dario as it is, as its own parcel, and demolish the housing immediately behind the dario and replace it with two new duplexes. So they came to zoning, worked together with Mark, brought it to planning with their surveyor, Sean Walsh. He explained to everyone exactly what he found, there were no problems from either zoning or the surveyor. And this was recommended for approval to the council by the Planning Commission. I'll entertain a motion to approve the application of the Marion and Carley revocable trust to divide a parcel of land located at two eighty-six West Sixth Street, tax I D two seven six dash one six four five dash seven zero zero zero. Motion by Mr. Downs, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Melby, is there discussion?
Just a quick question. I know the last time this came up that there was questions about like the setbacks and different things like that. All that's been discussed and resolved and...
Correct, yeah, and we did have, good question. And we did have members of the public, of course, they were notified. They came and asked questions and we all answered to everyone's satisfaction. Yeah, good question, you Matt. Further discussion? Okay, hearing no, we'll have a roll call, please.
Prue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, item ten, update in action on finalization of project modifying industrial park parcel boundaries. Jason, I'm gonna bring you into this conversation. Um, for a long time, uh, really, probably the whole time I've been mayor. Um, we've worked loosely on this and then a little more aggressively with the, um, boundaries at the, uh, the North Industrial Park. Uh, when we looked at the certified survey map, what we found, Jason found it, was, uh, for instance, some of the lot lines were, for example, in the middle of the street. Uh, industrial park probably a bad idea, a few other things, a lot of other things. Um, and as years had gone by and this project was completed and that one didn't go and then that one did, it just got a little sloppy out there. And so Jason and Ashley and I don't know everybody that's helped you, a lot of people have worked on this to bring it to this point. Jason, do you want to explain where we will be when this is done, why we're doing it and where we're going?
Yeah, so this is a project that we began in early twenty-three. Uh, you can see that in the agenda item cover sheet. And, um, we're looking to finalize this project. Beer-Vicker Engineering did the surveying, um, which is also part of your packet and is this, uh, survey map. Um, now what this will result in is several different C S Ms that will have to come back here for final approval. But tonight there's specifically a question in regard to the cleanup of the industrial park that we wanted to, to get, uh, council's input on and, and hopefully, um, maybe a vote up, I think, if it's appropriate. So this is our industrial park and, and the area that, that there's the most amount of question on is this southeast area. So this is Industrial Drive and this is double A along the right side. You can see that, do you? You can see that in this survey map that there are these odd-shaped parcels. This one is labeled Outlot One, this one's labeled Outlot One. And there was also a parcel right here, they're very narrow. So what these were are, they were subdivided out in the initial, um, C S M and plat to be reserved in city's ownership for utility right-of-ways, which we don't need to maintain the ownership of the land in order to have utility right-of-ways. We can do it through easements. And so what it, what it's done is kind of created odd situations. So if you have a developer looking at this, they either have to mer, they have to, um, rejoin lots. Otherwise their, their lot setbacks have to be derived from, let's say in this case, the, the innermost lot line. So it kind of creates confusion with, with regard to what you can do. It creates confusion with regard to setbacks or setback rules makes it more difficult to adhere to. So what we're proposing is that this lot would be one large lot, meaning this outlot would go away if the city needs to maintain a utility easement, which you can see there's utilities running along here and then they turn the corner, we would, we would do that through an easement. In the second lot, um, you can see there was an outlot here and, and one along this property line. So again, the proposal would be actually in this case to, um, to kind of clean things up would be to allow us to work on perhaps giving this piece of this small silver land to this property owner so that it, it moves on to the property tax rule. There's not really gonna be much effect, it's such a small piece of land. So it's more about cleaning up the survey and doing things consistently with today, which would be utility easements. And then again, you have that situation here. So this, this piece of property, um, would probably go with this property to the north. So what we'd like to ask today that I put in a, a request, um, uh, I, I think the, the motion would be that I'd be seeking is something like approval for economic development to continue to work on, um, the, uh, industrial park and dispose of the outlots reflected on the certified survey map to complete the restructuring of the industrial park. So the ask is, will you allow us in conjunction with Beer-Vicker to go ahead and dispose of these odd pieces of land and, um, come back to you with the final C S M after we've done the resulting work?
And disposal means, uh, seeing if the adjacent property owners would like to have that land and giving it to them?
Yes, and there might be some small costs associated with that to us, but, but at this point, those small outlots are creating more confusion. And if somebody comes back around and has to figure this out again, uh, you know, five years from now, we're, we're simply just kind of throwing, um, money away. So I think it's, it's much simpler, much neater and would allow us to complete the, kind of the reorganization of the C S M for the industrial work.
And as was mentioned at planning, in most of these cases, the adjacent landowners are doing the lawn mowing and all of that anyway. Uh, and as you look up there, any of those narrow pieces of land, the likelihood of somebody calling us and wanting to buy just that strip of land, not real great. So this is an attempt to just kind of clean this up. And if the guy next door is already mowing the grass, make the little sliver now the new end of his lot. Okay, go ahead, did you have something? Did you have something?
Do you, from a utility perspective with the easements, is that something that you guys commonly do?
I think it was laid out that way, that's why I need to go back and check because our primary and everything come in and feed all them lots through those pieces, so...
Yeah, that's, they, they have it reflected here. So this is an actual site survey of the utilities that exist on site. So you can see that there's buried, there's buried line here. Um, there's nothing in this section, nothing in this, it's, so anywhere that there is major utility, they have surveyed that and included it in the survey map. So what we would be doing in this particular case is we would be creating the easement. That's part of the completed package that Beer-Vicker would provide, is the utility easement to go along with the now larger lot two, rather than there being two separate lots which forces us into a situation where we have to honor setbacks from the small lot versus a larger, larger lot. It just allows us to better utilize the, the property while using easements rather than maintaining ownership of the property.
What you're showing the council, I believe, was developed for you, for us, by Beer-Vicker, was it not?
Correct, right.
Yeah, correct. So do we need to word the motion? How, what, what permission do you want?
So it would be, um...
Authorize the disposal of outlots twelve thirteen and the new C S M.
Yeah, I think that we have, we recorded that actually in the Planning Commission. So do you have that in motion, Ashley?
I was gonna ask if anyone had, I don't know if that motion is here, the, the way it was worded.
It's not, it's not in the packet. I, um, have my handwritten notes, I could go grab from...
Yeah, why don't we do that? Okay. While she's getting that, this really has been years, it's been a long process. There was a lot line in the middle of the cul-de-sac back by the Bowen Cemetery. There were more than one on Industrial Drive. Um, multiple times, Jason's been approached, I've been approached, usually by existing businesses that had some interest in a lot out there. And one way or another, we've run into some of this, what we're dealing with tonight. So this is an effort to just clean it up, um, and to have everything a lot easier to, to market, honestly, on behalf of the city.
Yeah, I mean, another example of what, the way they were laid out is you can see the existing lot lines that exist. There's a retaining pond that is near the, um, near our utility, uh, buildings out here. So the buildings that we maintain in the industrial park for the water department, the street department, the electrical. This is a retaining pond that had we not gone through this work, that we would have transferred ownership or had to go through this process when somebody else came and said we'd like to buy the land. And then we'd be doing it on a piecemeal basis. So they say, we want Lot Thirty-One, and we say, oh, wait a minute. Um, the lot line wasn't honored when we built the, um, the street department building because it, it infringed upon the lot line. Um, and oh, by the way, we need to cut out just half of the uti, of the retaining ponds so that we can maintain ownership since it's a part of the wastewater, uh, function of the industrial park. So rather than piecemealing, we went to Beer-Vicker and said, hey, can you take care of all of these issues that we're finding at once? Um, and so we're very close to buttoning that all up. It's just that wanting to, again, dispose of these so that, or, or, you know, have your input on the disposal of these so that we can finalize the C S Ms, bring them back to you for final approval.
Go ahead, Ashley.
So the motion at the Planning Commission meeting was to recommend to the common council to approve the disposition of the existing outlet twelve and outlet thirteen of the new C S M. So it would be a motion here tonight to approve the disposition of existing outlet twelve and thirteen of the new C S M.
We'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Ms. Walters, on the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Downs. Okay, any further discussion?
So Jason, if like top a outlet one there that goes to the neighboring property in the north, that's, if I'm reading it right, point two-two acres, is that correct?
Correct.
So that now becomes taxable?
Correct.
Got it?
Yes, it would now be part of the taxable parcel next door.
Got it.
There we go. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Turn around, we'll roll call.
Cairns.
Aye.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, next on the agenda, appointments to committees, commissions, boards, and confirmal boards. I don't have any tonight, but in the near future we will. Uh, there will be openings on tourism, library, and planning, all three. And the reason for that is because Candace Faglin, who has filled all three, and her husband will be moving to Phoenix, Arizona. And I wanted to take a minute, I work with Ryan on my day job, know him very well. He actually really nudged hard to get Candace into doing any of this at first. And then she did and started with planning and I don't remember which one was next, library or tourism, but ultimately all three, and has really helped the city and been a, a key contributor on every committee she's been part of. And it's, makes me sad that they're leaving. Uh, they should be, she, it's, it's for the right reasons, but I don't like it. It's a good contributor leaving, so more than anything, I just wanted to say publicly, say thank you to Candace Faglin for her service to the city. Okay, public comment, no council action will be taken on any matter originating under this item. Is there any member of the public who would like to address the council tonight? Um, go ahead, sir. If you can just tell us who you are, and go ahead.
Uh, hello, my name is Casey Governer, one one eight six North Third Street. Um, before I actually get started with my new item, I wanted to bring, actually, I wanted to thank a few people. First of all, story talk, my wife loves that, so thank you very much. Um, as well as the A Street Crossing, that's fantastic, we're great up there. So that's been really helpful right from the beginning, thank you so much. Um, third, fair traffic going past the, um, A Street and the cemetery there is already starting to come through. So any signage you can get up earlier, the earlier the better. Just a note that I wanted to say, it's going right past my house, everyone. And then we also do look forward to splash cuts, so thank you very much. And then, as we've had all our construction, thank you for the people who entertained all of my numerous emails and questions. So what I wanted to bring together was actually kind of more of a question and looking for a little direction from the council. As you may have seen earlier, my wife and daughter were here. My wife, or my daughter is in a wheelchair. And when that happens, your eyes really open up to see kind of the world and the environment around you and kind of what things are in or not in the way. And I'd like to be a part, or at least get some input into how to make things more AA accessible in the community, especially with parks and some of the trails and other stuff around the community.
Please see me immediately after the meeting.
Sorry, what?
Please see me immediately after this meeting.
Okay.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have some suggestions. I realize that it's coming up on city budget time, and I don't expect, you know, you guys to build a dodging hall for us. I just wanted to get some ideas out there and know who to go to first. That's all. So come to you?
Yes.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Sharon Spitz?
I just had a question. What is CMS?
CSM.
Certified Survey Map? CSM?
Whatever he was talking about.
Certified Survey Map.
Walmart is customer service manager. He's a customer service manager.
Hear that over the speakers at Walmart all the time, so...
What's done you spend?
They are waiting too much.
He's the CMS.
No, no.
Okay. No one else from the public that would like to, who would like to address the council? Okay, in that case, entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second? That was Karen, goddamn, is there a second? Second, Mr. Downs. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned tonight's meeting? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, folks, for coming.